of the Johnson City Board of Education to order. I want to thank everyone for being here. We always start our meeting with a moment of silence. If you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Do we have someone to lead us in the, okay, sorry, I didn't know that. Would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you for standing. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
I appreciate the opportunity to inform you how we have been at Lakewood the last two years. In fact, last year I missed the opportunity. So I'm excited to talk to you about that tonight. First, I want to draw attention to the back wall. We have some of our art displays from our children. And Ms. Anne Farinbok, thank you, Ms. Anne. She's being our Vanna. And I want to show you all the wonderful work they've done this last year. Thank you, Ms. Farinbok. Thank you. All right, school board, thank you so much for your continued support. I know this last year we have had unparalleled challenges. And I need to give a shout out to our school nurse who's phenomenal, Brandy Nixon. I know she couldn't be here tonight, but I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge her. And also tell you all thank you for allowing us to have her. Dr. Wallace, thank you for supporting us as well with RTIB and the staff that we have there. We also have a phenomenal custodial crew. What would we do without them? So my head custodian, Lisa Payne, Tika Wymer, Kathy Dear, and Herbert Hall. I also want to say thank you so much for your technology support. Through this last year, we've had the challenges I mentioned earlier. But if we did not have the devices and the opportunities to teach our children in these circumstances, we would be lost. So we appreciate your support and allowing us the devices we need to teach our children in any circumstance. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Also, we have some new student options, faculty-led student options this past two years. Our Girls Who Code Club has been phenomenal. I don't know if you were able to see some of the write-ups on that this year. Gave girls great options for technology, for for coding through the computer and things that I never would imagine doing, they were able to do so easily. So we have a new Lego League, which actually started last year. But this year we kind of put a pause button on that with COVID, but we will we will pick up the reins and keep rolling with that. Reading on the Ridge and Ready on the Ridge, some great reading clubs after school. And we had several math clubs based on grade bands. So wonderful things that are happening there. I wanted to let you know through our RTI program, we also served 86 students this year in our RTI program, with several of those moving back into Tier One, which was wonderful. Shout out to the teachers and the RTI team for that. And I'm excited about an after-school club that we're going to have next year. We received a $5,000 grant from TPA, a STEM grant. And we're going to start a Lego Robotics League at the school, and they'll eventually be competing. So that'll be something really exciting for next school year. We're happy about that. Also, we had some really cool student group, student-led groups this year. It started in the fourth grade this year. We started something called Kindness Fridays. And they would do different things. They collected socks for cancer patients receiving chemo. They wrote notes and sweet, kind letters to people in the school, custodial staff, nurses. They collected money for gift cards, things like that. Any way that they wanted to show kindness to people across the community and within the school, they did that. It started in fourth grade. It worked its way all the way down into kindergarten this year. So that was phenomenal, led by some of our fantastic faculty and staff. We also just started last month a student leadership team, where the students are creating a survey, which will actually go out next week just to the student body. And they will find out some of those things that are important to them, some of the things that kept coming back up, just to give you an idea. Were the environment, taking care of our environment, possibly starting some options for recycling. They kind of, if you remember, we had the milk machines last year, which were hit. We took them away this year just for safety, but we'll hopefully bring those back one day soon. And they're looking forward to jumping back on to some of those things and seeing what kind of impact they can have as students. I cannot stop without saying thank you to our PTA. I know we've got some PTA members in here. You all support us as well. We are so grateful for your donations. We're grateful for all that you do for us. I know this year they've donated $20,000 for potential playground equipment and things that we need up at our track area. So I really appreciate all that they do. I would be completely amiss if I did not recognize my amazing faculty, several who are here tonight. They have made this year such a success. To each of you, I applaud you. You faced a, you faced new teaching assignments this year. You didn't ask and you didn't sign up for some of the things that you were asked to do. You moved classrooms, you learned new tools, and you taught students with all you had. And you did it with joy. To you, I appreciate you. Thank you. So members of the school board, I'm happy to report, we are well at Lakewood and we're flourishing. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you so much for your report. Next on our agenda, we have some recognitions. I will ask people in the audience, we're kind of crowded in here. If you have a mask, please put it on and wear it. If you're at the podium, you can go, you can speak without a mask.
Good evening. Thank you. We want to begin by recognizing three students from Science Hill High School for their outstanding academic achievement. National Speech and Debate Association has over 141,000 student members nationwide. Fewer than 1% earn academic All-American status. This evening, we want to recognize the following students for earning Academic All-American through this association. Taryn Estes, Emily Horvath, Preston Lloyd. If you guys are here, come on up, please. The addition of these three students brings our total to four NSDA Academic All-Americans from Science Hill this school year. We have a community partner we want to recognize as well. Gary Lewis, for his efforts to meet the needs of many of the students attending Lakewood Elementary. He's been instrumental in helping those students be successful. We want to thank him for all he does for the school and the community. Now, he's not here tonight, but we want to recognize him publicly as well. We want to recognize one of our principals for his recent accomplishment. Dr. Josh Simmons, recently named First Core Region semifinalist for the 2021-2022 Tennessee Principal of the Year by the Tennessee Department of Education. We wish him the best as he advances toward consideration for Tennessee Principal of the Year. And finally, we want to recognize an outstanding group of educators for their work as tech teacher leaders. Mr. Russ Minatell from Science Hill High School will tell you more.
Thank you. I teach ninth graders English at Science Hill High School, and I am a teacher leader. I don't really know how to say this without the use of cliche, but man, it's been a year. I've been intrigued and exhausted by educational challenges and filled with joy and sorrow by the nightly news. I am lucky to face all of this with the support of my fellow teacher leaders. And we have been lucky enough to have you supporting us. Thank you. Considering all the career calisthenics we've done in the last 14 months, it's a good thing that I finally learned to enjoy and appreciate work. President Theodore Roosevelt said, far and away, the best prize that life offers is the chance to work hard at work worth doing. I have been fortunate enough to experience the truth of that quote. But a younger version of me would have thought it a ridiculous idea. Like a lot of kids, I spent most of my childhood running away from shores. When the grass got tall or the dishes dirty, I made myself scarce. It wasn't until I was 19 that I learned the veracity of work worth doing. Last summer, I went on a mission trip with the First Baptist Church of Boone, North Carolina. We spent long days in the summer sun roofing houses for those who need it, but could not afford repairs. At the end of each day, I was weary, dirty, and happy. Work worth doing truly is amazing. And it is one of the reasons why amid all of the tragedy and injustice we have faced this year, that I've been able to find happiness. Leslie Note, a fictional character from NBC sitcom Parks and Rec, is also inspired by President Roosevelt's mantra. And to it she added, what makes work worth doing is getting to do it with people you love. Find your team. Find a group of people who challenge and inspire you. Spend a lot of time with them, and it would change your life. Listen, say yes, live in the moment, make sure you play with people who have your back. Make big choices early and often. You never know what is around the corner unless you peek. Hold someone's hand while you do it. You'll feel less scared. You can't do this alone. Besides, it is much more fun to succeed and fail with other people. And you can blame them when things go wrong. So what exactly have teacher leaders been up to this year? What does our team do? Our instructional design coach, Tina Faust, sums it up best. All of our teacher leaders have been instrumental in supporting their colleagues, students, and families. Our teacher leaders have been available on-site to offer customized support and tailor professional development to meet the individual needs of our educators. As we transition to online learning environments, the teacher leaders have been available to work one-on-one with teachers who needed support. Again, I count myself lucky to be in the company of such a team, Cohort Five at the Johnson City Schools Teacher Leaders. And I am humbled and inspired when I think of all the things they have done this year. Allison Berry is proud to report at Town Acres. Teacher leaders have created on-demand virtual lessons for PE that can be completed on rainy days. And the art teachers made a video library with over 100 lessons. Misty Davis observes that at Indian Trail, Chromebooks and Canvas have allowed us to continue to provide quality education throughout our time with students as distant learners, hybrid learners, and in-person learners. Canvas has allowed us to document, display, record, and house all lesson materials for students at home and in the classroom, so we can reach students independent of their location. Additionally, it allows for increased collaboration and sharing between teachers. While the worldwide and local situation has been challenging at times, Johnson City Schools and the Board of Directors have enabled us to continue to meet the needs of our learners and continue to be educational technology leaders in our area and to the greater digital world. An anonymous and humble teacher leader shares that this past year has been a whirlwind transformation for me and my classroom. I began the 2020 shutdown with a very basic knowledge of educational technology tools and had only implemented some. Through the focus, guidance, and especially collaboration with Cohort Five, I have grown in my tech knowledge, but very much more so in the why behind using them in my classroom. Angie Smith from Lakewood notes that teacher leaders are resilient and adaptable. She goes on to say that our leaders, Dr. Timms and Ms. Faust, have been irreplaceable and supportive. And that being a tech leader is more than attending a few meetings to learn about a new platform. It's about being part of an elite group of educators who expect the best of themselves to serve students in Johnson City. In the words of George Kuros, pedagogy comes before technology. Mallory Hoover, a third-grade teacher from Southside, notes that Cohort Five has helped us all navigate the best ways to provide instruction, peer collaboration, and feedback, as well as how to best assess and gauge student learning. Hunter Graybill has been able to use digital tools to create 12 weeks of online theater curriculum for fifth and sixth graders, even though he teaches theater at the high school at Science Hill. In addition to teaching six different grades, his students have also won multiple awards. As a fellow teacher leader, I'd like to take credit for some of those accolades, too. Not many people enjoy working on their days off, but Rebecca Weems, an ELA teacher at Lakewood, tells a different story. It is easy to get up and dedicate part of your Saturday to what some might see as extra work. And there were some Fridays that I would think, I don't want to wake up early and work tomorrow. However, it never failed that I would leave our Saturday sessions refreshed and with a new spark for what I'd be taking back to the classroom the following week. Dr. Timms and Tina Faust always seem to bring a lot of positivity during a year where it was much needed. I feel like their mindset is where there's a will, there's a way. Dr. Timms especially makes nothing feel too big or too impossible. Liberty Bell counselor Stacy Felbrick has learned a few new tricks as a teacher leader. She shares that this year brought many new opportunities to communicate with my students utilizing technology. It is truly amazing how much things have changed over the past year. I've gone from minimal use of technology to communicating daily through Canvas, email, Google Forms, and recorded videos. I'm grateful for the opportunity to learn alongside my teacher leader colleagues. While all of our teachers and teacher leaders have worked magic, I'm gobsmacked by the idea that some teacher magician actually taught fully remote kindergarten. I sobbed in a few kindergarten classrooms. And I don't know how you just don't sing songs and play with those cuties all day long, let alone actually teach them how to read and write and do math and behave and love each other. Not only did Hannah Arnold do all of this and more, she did it remotely, fully remotely. At first, she entered teacher mourning. She was worried that her 27 kids would be in a non-kid-friendly learning environment. But soon, her mourning turned into determination and problem solving. She started using puppets, just like her teachers. And soon, Ms. Arnold and her kids were joined in Zoom by Pete the Cat and Ally the Alligator, who actually became the class president. Her kids can't wait to attend their next Zoom meeting. In a time of social distancing, Ms. Arnold was able to mix new technology with old-school practices into a loving community, a place that has come to be known as Ms. Arnold's Neighborhood. I can't believe that I get to be part of such an amazing team. But I wouldn't be a teacher if I didn't tell you how lucky I am to have such fantastic students. Teachers simply do not exist without students. Albus Dumbledore belongs to Hogwarts and Harry Potter. Daniel LaRusso learned more than karate from Mr. Miyagi. You may not have heard of Sarah Fuller, but I'm sure you know her pupil. Pilot, author, disability rights advocate, political advocate, activist, and lecturer Helen Keller. If not for the writings of Aristotle and Plato, we may have never heard of their teacher, someone named Socrates. Thankfully, there's not a lot of Dr. Hannibal Lecter and Clarice Starling teacher-student relationships. But it is worth noting that the good doctor would not have escaped if it wasn't for his student. My students have been incredible. In the year of Zoom and Canvas Studio and iXL and Screens, they've been my therapist and IT guy, sometimes on the same day. Their facility whiff and eagerness to use technology has made this year fully remote and hybrid learning possible. Their patience with the fickle Wi-Fi, myriad apps, and nervous, bearded teachers laid the foundation for all of our accomplishments. Our students are truly awe-inspiring. It is this level of wonder that reminds me of one more teacher and student pair, Yoda and Luke Skywalker. When they first meet, Yoda asks Luke, ready are you? What know you of ready? He could have been talking to me. As a 20-year veteran in February 2020, I thought I knew everything about teaching high school English. I was not ready. Thankfully, the camaraderie of the teacher leaders helped me get ready. I've never heard of, I had never heard of Zoom or Canvas Studio until I went to a workshop in this very same room back in June. Just a few weeks later, I was helping other teachers make videos and set up their virtual classes. One of the last bits of wisdom Yoda shares of Luke has always stuck with me. About students, Yoda posits, we are what they grow beyond. That is the burden of all masters. This truth is exactly why I teach, but I do not consider it a burden. It is the greatest honor of my life to teach students. And the highlight of my career has been watching as students excel in spite of this global pandemic. My emotions are full to the point of bursting when I imagine how much smarter and better and happier my students will become. And I hope that I can be a small reason why that happens. That is indeed work worth doing. And the teacher leaders are an amazing team whose passion is to excel at and be worthy of that work. Thank you for supporting our endeavors and our students.
Thank you so much for that update on the teacher leaders. It's great. Next on our agenda, we have a proclamation for School Lunch Hero Day. And I know that this last year, this last year and a half of it has been tough on everyone, but our system has pulled together and our cafeteria workers have been amazing. They have made things work that that none of us would have thought. So I have a proclamation to read, and then Ms. McGahey will come up and say a few words. Whereas nutritious meals at school are an essential part of the school day. And whereas the staff of Johnson City School Food Service Department is committed to providing healthful, nutritious meals to Johnson City's children. And whereas the men and women who prepare and serve school meals help and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support, and whereas over 1,100,000 meals have been provided to our children both in school and remotely since the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas the day of Friday, May 7, 2021, is School Lunch Hero Day. Now therefore, be it resolved that Johnson City Schools expresses its deepest appreciation to these valuable employees and commends their good work on behalf of children. Signed, Kathy Hall, Chairman. But thank you all for all you do. Let's give them a round of applause. After Ms. McGahey speaks, we'll have all of you come up and we'll take a picture.
That'd be great. Thank you so much, and thank you for that great introduction of work worth doing. We do have a marvelous school meals team, and thank you for honoring us with this proclamation. You know, the women that are here today, we also have men in our department, are true heroes, and they have taken the essential worker designation to heart. When we asked them to come back to work last year when everyone else was at home, no one hesitated in the least, and they took the essential worker designation to heart. We were working face-to-face with the public, and they didn't hesitate and said, "We feed children. It's what we do." So not only did we go out in the community and offer meals both in school and in the community, they've also expanded the work that they've done this year by sending meals home on the weekends for some of our children who are the neediest in our community. Also, they're not here today, but we also want to include the Johnson City Transit Department. They have been essential in allowing us to broaden our scope and get meals into the community, and they have been a wonderful partner throughout this whole endeavor. So thank you very much. Y'all come up, get your picture taken.
I'd like to make two small changes. One of the people that signed up to speak with us tonight is unable to be here. I've talked to every board member, and they've all okayed having someone substitute for her, so we'll make that change. Also, I'd like to move Dr. Greg Wallace's safety protocol update up to the beginning of reports from superintendent and staff, because I think that's what a lot of people who are here are interested in hearing. So with those two changes, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. That brings us to correspondence. I have three people. We're going to start with Misty Mead. I will ask you to come up to the podium. You may remove your mask while you were speaking. I ask you to put it back on when you leave. Please limit your comments to three minutes. I'll have a timer. I'll give you kind of a hand signal when you've got 60 seconds left. Just tell us your name and how you're affiliated with the school system. You should know at this point, we do not respond to your, but if there's any follow-up to be done, we'll do it.
My name is Misty Mead, and I am a mom to a second grader in the Johnson City School I was kind of made aware that there might be some changes to the mask policy, and so I just wanted to kind of say thank you for keeping our kids in school the best that we could do this year. I know it's been really rough on everyone and not logistically very easy, but I'm concerned with the continued mask use in our kids. I know Governor Lee did the executive order that ended kind of the local authority on the mask requirements, and I know at the beginning of the pandemic, we were all just, you know, scared and trying to do the best that we can, but we have new data from the Health Department and also from just across the US and abroad. Children rarely infect each other at school, and their cases are usually pretty mild, and it rarely harms children, and the death rate resembles kind of what we're seeing with like a normal flu. It presents kind of a small health risk to children that society has kind of accepted for a long time without closing schools or requiring masks. A child that is driven to school actually faces a bigger risk statistically than from their car trip than from the virus. Kind of believe when it comes to safety masking, kids are a little bit of a facade. I mean, it's kind of wishful thinking on our part that they're going to keep it clean and sterile. I know when I pick my son up from school, his mask is soaking wet. It's covered in dirt. It's covered in food. It's pretty gross. I've watched kids in car line like literally lift their mask down to sneeze. I'm just kind of questioning, why are we still doing this? We kind of know more, a lot more now. We have better treatment options. We have the option of vaccinations. What gives kind of, and I also question just the school board in general. I don't know legally if necessarily just on the TCA code, I think it's 49-2-203, that kind of, our policy now kind of contradicts that. We're masking kids that are healthy. They're not showing symptoms, and based on that code, it's kind of the opposite of the policy there. So just also wondering about kind of the social implications of our special needs kids. I'm a special needs mom. As far as masks go, it's been rough, you know, sensory-wise, socially. It's not ideal. Kids who have speech difficulties are also really struggling, so kind of just wanted to see where we stand. Thank you.
Thank you. I meant to mention when I talked about the agenda that there is some misinformation that we would be voting tonight about masks for next year. That is not on our agenda. I'm not sure where that came from, but that is not a part of what we'll be talking about tonight. Our next speaker is, I might mispronounce this last name, Mary?
Burkali.
Burkali. Thank you for helping me out.
You're welcome.
Please come up. You heard the thing, three minutes, and just tell us how you're affiliated with the school.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Mary Burkali, and I'm a mother of two children. They are in the elementary school age right now, but they're about to go into intermediate. And I myself moved back to Johnson City in 2016 as a single mother, working all the time, doing school and all that. I really wanted to be active in their education. I myself was homeschooled, and there's a lot of social stuff that I missed out on, a lot of scholarship stuff back in, you know, back in the day. I'm 35 now, so I'm sure it's changed now. There's a lot of great, you know, virtual stuff now. But there's a larger picture I'm more a little bit concerned about, similar to this lady. I know, as she has also said, I know we're not technically, it's not on board tonight, but I wasn't sure how to address the school board, so I guess I'm here asking, you know, what are we looking at next year? I have complex PTSD, and I'm an advocate for trauma, ETSU grad for holistic counseling. I'm really worried about our babies. I'm going to be honest. I don't want them to get sick either. I don't want anyone to be sick. And I understand we have an issue and a crisis, but as it's been said, the mandates, which was not even a law, it's been lifted. So I'm wanting to understand and make sure that my kids that are going to be coming back in the fall, and everyone else is, because I'm sure, as we can see, there's others that have the same question, what are our kids coming back into? Because obviously, it's no longer as much of an issue as it was. The mandate has been lifted. We have signs showing the harm that it does ongoing. That's what I'm worried about. You know, the virus itself, and I mean, I'm sure you guys can do your own homework. I've got stuff if you want. I mean, I'm not, I don't have a medical degree, so I'm not speaking on behalf of a doctor. I'm speaking on behalf of an American citizen that even standing here shaking, I'm worried about our babies. Because we don't want them to get sick, but we don't want them to also be getting off the school bus, throwing it in the river, adding to pollution. They're coming home with these bacterial infections because they're not using them the way they're meant to be used. They're just not. I'm a CNA. We all know basic hand washing, and there's protocols. They're not being followed properly. You can't watch a kid 24/7. You just can't. But like I said, I'm concerned about the long-term damage, and there's a lot, I mean, I can't, I don't, like I said, I know I've only got three minutes. If anyone's interested, I have it, and it's out there, and I know we have doctors in this room that have information that you can seek. Dr. Sibley is one. I trust her when it comes to medical knowledge, but I'm worried. No, I just want to know what we're coming into next year, because I want to be able to show my kids, yes, we are in a country of freedom, but we also a country of safety, and there's a balance, and it's all about balance. And I feel like it's very much out of balance, and things are being crossed that shouldn't be crossed, and I'm just wanting to make sure it's done the way it's supposed to be done. And I appreciate your letting me speak. I wasn't sure how to get here, so thank you very much for hearing me.
And our final speaker tonight is Bridget Cheek. Again, your name and how you're associated with the school.
Hi, I'm Bridget Cheek. I have a child at Liberty Bell, and I am here to speak for Danielle Goodrich, who could not be here. Her sentiments are my same sentiments, and thank you for allowing me to do that. I do appreciate that very much. She has three children in the school system as well. We all are concerned about our babies. I love how you said that. What she wanted to say was, she has a lot of information. She does a lot of research. Even when it became clear that we had our highest peaks during mask mandates, showing masks don't work, you still mask them. Even as adults prone to more serious infection could unmask at tables surrounded by strangers, you would not let them unmask at desks surrounded by peers. Even when it was clear children weren't getting serious infection, you still. Even when we brought mental health therapists and local doctors to testify to the mental harms and effectiveness, you still masked them. Even when we asked the local health department for proof it was necessary and not harmful, and their own evidence showed school transmission to be low, and if it happens, it's teacher-to-teacher, not student-to-teacher, not teacher-to-student, not student-to-student. Even when we sent you a 23-page response to the health department tearing their evidence to pieces with science, even when their own documents showed masks are ineffective in children due to improper wear, that mask-wearing is akin to breath-holding, which is not safe, especially for seven to eight hours a day. Even when they had no evidence, blocking smiles and expressions isn't harmful, and we sent them a plethora of studies of how it is, showing how smiles are rewards necessary for social bonds and normal cognitive development. You still deny this, saying kids seem happy. We sent you the statistics on this. Forty-six percent have suicidal ideation, with local mental health therapists confirming this. Stop denying the facts. The only thing you have blocked is the spread of happiness and beneficial reassurance. Even when other schools, including Kingsport, allowed exemptions, you would not, showing inconsistency in the application of the state law. And federal code demands this option when something is issued in EUA Code 21 U.S. 360BBB-3. Even when other schools across the state unmasked with no issue, you still mask them. Even when the NIH changed their stance on early preventative treatment, and local doctors have kept thousands of people of all ages out of the hospital successfully, showing there are options that work. Even when the governor removed authority because there's a vaccine, and you claim TCA Code 49-2-203 gives you this authority, a code which upon reading it only mentions health in Section B-2, which only gives permission to have a physician prove a child sick and send them home until well, not to send a healthy child home until proven sick, not to prescribe a medical device on a whole school, which are not dress code, as they can be legally defined as a medical device.
Could you please wrap it up? Your time is up.
This broad and inaccurate interpretation of this code would give you permission to use a rectal thermometer with how loosely you are applying it, and we believe that that's inaccurate and would not hold up in court in front of a justice judge. We've been asking you for over a year to set our kids free to normal learning environment as there was ample proof as necessary. You have not done a conclusive risk-benefit analysis, as you haven't done one at all.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Please unmask our kids.
Next on our agenda is reports from the superintendent and staff.
Thank you. The first report tonight is safety protocols update, Dr. Greg Wallace.
Dr. Wood, I'm not 5'3", so we wanted to make sure that we kept you up to date on the latest recommendations that we're going to, that we're going to suggest to the school board. I want to go through these, y'all, I put a list in front of you. I want to go through these point by point, just to make sure that you're aware, and then we can discuss each one of those as you feel, as you feel free. First of all, we want to continue to follow the Department of Health recommendations regarding contact tracing and return-to-school algorithms. It's important to note that that's going to continue whether we do that or not. So one of the things that we have done very well as a district is we've kept our kids in school, which has been a big priority for Dr. Barnett, to keep them in school as much as possible and to do that safely. Tracing and quarantining does not stop, even if we were to stop that. The only difference would be is that they would be completely in charge of that without the assistance from the school, which would probably mean additional quarantining, because they're not going to have the same specific data. So what our team does, led by Jennifer Norton, is they really pull those seating charts apart, they look at them, they pay very close attention to them, so that we can only affect the minimum number of students as possible. So we're going to recommend, I'm recommending that we continue to follow TDH recommendations for contact tracing and return-to-school algorithm. Number two, we want to allow the removal of masks for elementary students K-4 while they're seated at their desk, and only have them, put them back on when they're moving into common areas. We kept this to K-4 because that's an area that obviously that we keep them, we're much able to, much better able to contact trace by doing this. They stay in cohorts very specifically. The older the students get, the harder it is to maintain that. So even if we have a situation that we, where we've had outbreaks, and as you all are aware, that we've had several since spring break, where we've had to quarantine entire classes, this will still allow us to be able to do that very specifically to one class at the elementary level. Number three is a continuation, and I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that we allow mask removal outside, and especially due to current evidence showing decreased risk on outside. So we, we've said that all along at our schools, both at the PE time and outside, that we don't allow, or we don't require students to wear masks outside.
Dr. Wallace?
Yes, ma'am.
While you're on that point, that's all grade levels, correct?
That is all grade levels. That's correct, and that's been consistent from the beginning of the year. Yeah, the only thing that was specific, Dr. Carter, I'm glad you brought that up. The only thing that's specific to our elementaries, that initial mask off at the desk. Number four, to continue to allow mask removal while eating and in the cafeteria and the continued use of cohorts and seating. So again, that's something that we have done all year. We've tried to keep students grouped together if we have to make decisions on quarantining, but students have not had to wear their mask in the cafeteria time. Number five, to cease to use masks beginning at our summer school session, pending continued improvement of data toward the transmission of COVID-19 across Washington County. I'll remind everybody, our average number of infections in the last seven days is 23, which would still put us in a high transmission rate. According to the latest White House coronavirus task force map, we are still in the red area for Washington County.
So on that one, it would mean that beginning summer session, moving forward, mask optional. So we'll have students So we'll have students and we'll have staff members that still want to wear masks.
That's correct.
They have that option.
That's correct.
But we're not going to require it.
That's correct.
At that point.
Beginning summer school. That's correct. And then number six, one of the things that has been mentioned several times, the governor mentioned in his announcement, the increased availability of vaccinations. We want to coordinate with Washington County Health Department to provide a vaccination pod for our students, for those students and/or families that want to have that vaccination, maybe have had some access issues. We want to try to provide that to allow easier access for that. Currently, it's 16 and above that students that want to be vaccinated can. And that would be similar to our flu clinics that we do every year. We're Wash County, we work in coordination with the health department to provide flu vaccines in our school.
And we don't want that confused with that it's a requirement for school. Definitely not a requirement for staff or students, but we want to make that available.
That's correct. We just want to help support those that want to do that. And then finally, continue our other mitigation strategies that are supported by the current evidence of transmission within our own school, which include obviously, you know, our cleaning protocols, social distancing when available. We've always tried to say that to make sure that students aren't gathered up closely as much as possible. So those are our seven point of recommendations that I would make to Dr. Barnett after talking to Dr. Barnett to the school board.
Are there any questions? So we need to decide as a board how we want to handle this. We have up to this point said, you know, you need to move quickly when things change. We have supported decisions made by Dr. Barnett and his team without voting on each and every change of protocol. We can continue to allow that. We can have a motion that accepts these protocols, but I would ask that we include some language that allows them to change, to shift if they need to shift. So if there's some change in that, that we don't have to gather together as a board and vote on each little change.
Well, I would say that I very much, as a mom, you know, having a kid, that I'm, I think we're all ready for masks to be over. I'm ready for masks to be over for my daughter. And I've said every time I speak about, I'm concerned about the mental health issues as I have. In my profession, I typically write more birth control than anything, but it has been mental health drugs for the past year. And suicide notes from parents finding, and we've had in the ER adolescents waiting for inpatient therapy in, in mental health that they need. So that is very near and dear to my heart as well. So I'm hoping as we move forward with this summer session. What I don't know that I'm ready to do though, is that if, if we do that and go back to masks, that I, I don't know that I want to give that up without the board discussing that. So if we ever had to consider that, I would like the board to be involved in that. Because I think we are very, I know everybody has opinions both ways, and I think that we ought to come together because I think we each get calls and comments from the community and medical providers, and we all bring something to the table. I appreciate everything everybody's done. I want to appreciate the teachers. This year, I think I have struggled more than my daughter this year, just seeing their little faces. But I appreciate everything everybody's done. Somehow, I told Dr. Simmons, Ava came home and said her TCAP week was her most favorite week of school. So however you guys do that, kudos to you all. So that would be, Ms. Hall, just my comment is that if, I'm fine, I think this sounds like a good, good steps in the direction that I would like to go in. But if we had to do a mask on our kids again, I would like the board to be involved.
I do want to say on Dr. Carter's comments, you guys have done such a fantastic job this year. I don't think there's a system in this state or hardly a system in this state that has been in school as much as we have. And part of that is because of careful planning and protocols in place. And so thank you for all of that hard work and tough decisions you've made. Dr. Carter, do you want to make a motion?
Then I move that we go with this transition as Dr. Wallace has proposed, which in summary, just so, if Ms. Hall, if you're okay with that. K through four, remove the mask at the desk starting tomorrow.
That's correct.
In common areas, they would wear them. No mask outside for any grade level, which is not new. And beginning with the summer session, masks are optional for both teachers, staff, and our children.
That's correct.
Any further action to go back to any kind of mask mandate would require action by the board.
There's a motion. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll say it.
Okay. Is there discussion?
I'd just like to make the comment too, that, you know, it's been a challenging year for everybody. It's been very challenging for our students and our teachers, support staff, administrators, but I'm extremely proud of this system. We've had our students in class more than any school that I'm aware of. I know that we've had some systems in the country haven't been in school whatsoever, even remotely. And we have a system that's in our region that did not have their, their students in the classroom until just a few months ago. So I just want to applaud Dr. Barnett and his staff in partnership, working with the Tennessee Department of Health. They've, and Dr. Wallace, they've worked really hard on keeping our students in the classroom as much as possible. So thank you for that. Thank you.
I just have a clarifying question. The, the summer plan, is that, would that continue? Is that, I feel like we're not making a decision for fall. That was just for summer.
That is correct. So
That is correct, but that's with the idea that things are continuing to improve. I really don't even, my hope is that we don't have to have a conversation about this after this and we move forward. That'll be an interesting thing when you have children though in the fall. If it goes as, as we hope and as I think it will, and I think we all think it will. In the fall, you're still going to have some students that may be anxious, some adults. So we have to be careful there. If a student wants to wear a mask, we need to make sure they're comfortable to do that. This is, might be something that during flu season, families send their kids with masks. Some do, some don't, but we want it to be the option. We've come far enough into the pandemic that we feel like that these are good recommendations. I really hope to make these to you sooner. But we figured there'd be a spike after spring break and there was. But then again, things like spike after Christmas didn't happen. There, there were a lot of things that we looked at and, you know, we had the students back in person as quick as possible after those breaks. So I do think with the vaccine and everything else that everybody's doing, that we're headed in a very positive direction. So the only way we would revisit this is if there was a a big change that I really, I'm hopeful and, and really feel like that we're coming to the end.
I do want to say though, that the recommendation covers the rest of the school year and the summer. And Dr. Barnett, you and I have both answered lots of emails in the last few days saying we are not voting on masks for the next year.
It's not a vote for them.
So what we're considering at this point is the rest of the school year and summer school.
With, with that amendment to that motion, that board action would be required if we go back to mask. That was, did it get a second? Just a second. Mr. Hager?
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, will you call the roll?
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Greenly?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Simpson?
Yes.
Ms. Treese?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace. The next report is, I think Mr. Trevitt missed last month. Let me turn my, I think, Mr. Trevitt.
So it made you stay longer.
To have you back. So our building projects update, it's for, from Mr. Randy Trevitt.
Did you say I could take this off up here too?
Absolutely. You can take it off.
Great. That makes things life easier. Hell, yeah.
Well, you know, we talked about it. There's going to be a situation where people are going to have to start, those that wear makeup may have to start putting makeup on
That's right.
Since they can remove their mask to speak up.
It's benefited me to wear one for a while. Yeah. I appreciate the time. I apologize for not being able to attend at the last month, but I promise I will not do two, two meetings in one sitting here. I'll just catch you up on what's going on. And we do have a lot going on in the, in the school system. There's a lot of construction that's happening. It's moving at a very, very fast pace. We're taking advantage of the good weather that we've been having of late. And so, and, and the summer months coming up, we're really got a lot of plans in place to really knock out some big chunks of these projects. And so I'm excited about what's, what's happening with the school system. The first thing I want to talk about is at Indian Trail Intermediate School, that project's coming along extremely well. It's still on schedule to be finished sometime in August of this year. That's the construction part and the 16 classrooms being converted into science labs. We're currently working on selecting science lab tables and, and furnishings for that space. That may come a little later. I've been working with Dr. Barnett on some funding sources for that. But we will have everything ready for that school to be converted to a middle school, should you choose to go that direction in the fall of 2022. So that project's, and I don't know if any of you have driven by, but the outside, all the brick is completed. They're working on the sidewalks, getting ready to start doing some paving. Paving, we've got all the drainage in to the retention pond. The inside, they're doing the finished work on the storage area. They've got four classrooms completed on the conversion. They got 12 to go. They're starting four more tomorrow. They're doing them in blocks of four. When summer, when school's out at the end of this month and summer hits, that's when they'll start doing the security for the foyer. And then really hitting those classroom conversions and then finishing everything up by August.
So the security for years, we're going to have South Side completed.
Correct.
Indian Trail.
Indian Trail be completed. Woodland.
Woodland.
Will be, when, when the project's
And Lake Ridge.
By fall.
Woodland and Lake Ridge.
Those are incorporated into these construction additions.
Okay.
And then we're going to talk about doing some additional work. You know, you and I have already talked about doing some additional work at Mountain View, and we may try to incorporate security, foyer security for that project as well. Since we will have architects and engineers on site for that project too.
And you all know that foyer, you've been in it. That's the one that's just
That's the difficult one. That's the one that's going to be a beast.
Mountain View.
We're not doing a construction project there, but we're looking at upgrading all the HVAC there over the next two years. And so we may incorporate foyer security for that as well. South Side Elementary School, that project's still moving forward. I would like to say this, we worked with all the principals the best we could during construction and during TCAPS. It was refreshing to hear that your daughter said that was the best week she had. Because it's hard for construction guys to be quiet, as you well know. So we did our best and we tried. We even had to turn off some backup beepers and things like that.
She's at Town Acres.
Oh.
But I'm telling you.
Don't, don't spoil it for me.
If you ask children, a lot of test week is, is a great week. They have fun. They, they show what they've learned. And I can honestly say at the elementary level, I just don't think, you know, we've got to have some of that, some of that assessment data. So that's great. But that being said, I know that everybody at Woodland really appreciates everything they did to work around so they, so they could focus.
And, and South Side. We, we did our best at South Side with the conditions. I will give you a heads up a year in advance. We're still going to be working at Woodland next year during TCAPS, and we're still going to be working, and we're, are going to be working at Lake Ridge. So it is very difficult when we're going to be at that stage under the gun to try to get finished by fall to be able to kind of pull off the job. So we're going to have to really work together on where the testing is going to take place, where we're going to be working. We're going to have to really plan that out. So I'm giving you guys a year's advance notice on that.
Okay, we'll start working.
There you go. And then Woodland Elementary School, the grading and the footings are being put in, the underground sprinklers, the water lines, all the utilities are, are being completed and put in. There's a lot of submittals that go on at the beginning of a project. So all the brick work has been ordered, all the doors, all the windows, all those things that are part of a project are being ordered because now for some really strange reason this year, we're having a lot of lead time on certain materials. We're having a lot of lead time on getting subcontractors in to do certain work and things like that because of coming out of COVID, everybody's opening up their projects and it's getting very, very busy out there. But Woodland is still on schedule. As soon as school's out, they're really going to go inside and start working on HVAC. We've got phasing plan in place to try to move things around. I've been working with Dr. Reach on how that's going to go, where, what she can expect to happen during the summer, what she can expect to happen when they come back for fall, those kinds of things so that, that they can plan on what's going on for this project. Because it is a, it's a large project. I mean, it's a little over $7 million. Lake Ridge Elementary School, the bids went out today. So it gets advertised in John City Press tomorrow. It should be on the John City website today. The architect sent it out to all the plan rooms today. So that project is due back to their bids and the costs are due back on May the 27th. So once we do that, then we'll take it to the city commission, get that project awarded, and hopefully get started on construction June or July of this summer. And that's another big project since we talked with you all and added upgrading the HVAC. We're doing a lot of work also with playgrounds. We're trying to catch up on some things that we've been talking about over the years that we've not had an opportunity to do. So all these schools are getting ADA playground updates. So that South Side, Lake Ridge, and Woodland will have ADA accessible playgrounds. We're also working at Lake Ridge. They're building a bridge off the new second floor of the addition over to that upper level playground. So to make that easier access and ADA accessible. Woodland and Lake Ridge are both scheduled to be completed by fall for the classrooms. But we will be extending probably into September, finishing up the, the complete HVAC upgrade. But our goal is, and the way we phased this thing in with the contractors and the architects, is that by fall, when, when fifth grade comes back, that they have a place to go, there's space available, it's furnished. Everything's working in that space. And so everything that's left with the HVAC, it'll be like in the mechanical rooms, tying everything together and putting the final touches on it. So we've given substantial completion for those for the HVAC part to be in September of 2022. Town Acres Elementary School, we're still working on those barricades. They're working on the design. They come in and said they think that can be completed for about $150,000. So we're moving forward with that project to close off that inner courtyard so that kids can change pods without being seen outside. Other projects down at the bottom, when I did this report, Miranda's really good continually reminding me. I've got a report due all the time. So sometimes, she's very good at that. And I, and I appreciate her doing that because if she didn't, I'm so busy on things, I'd forget. But when I did this, it was kind of late. So I just wanted to throw that little bullet point out there that we are architects, we've engaged some architects to work at Science Hill High School on upgrading the old science labs that are up there. And they're very old. They're original to the school. So we're looking at new millwork. We're looking at new flooring. You know, it's got asbestos in there. We're looking at new plumbing. Some of the areas in CDC type suite to put in bathrooms and showers for the needs of the children that are up there or the kids that are up there. And so that project, they're meeting right now, talking with staff to kind of do some planning. But I've asked the architects, instead of giving me, you know, a whole book of a preliminary plan and some flowery presentation, just to go ahead and give me a proposal on what it's going to cost for the architectural design and just move into that stage. And so they're moving into the schematic stages. We're bypassing all that upfront stuff that costs us a lot of money. It doesn't do us Um, we're bypassing all that upfront stuff that costs us a lot of money. It doesn't do us any good.
Sorry, flowery?
Flowery, yeah. Girlie, I usually say girly. So, uh-oh. You know, I didn't even think they were listening. And then we're also working in construction trades, the manly section up there to look at redesign and all that.
Quit digging.
Am I digging deeper? I'm sorry. I can't help it. I got a bad case of the OLDs. So we are working on the construction trade side too, to redesign that whole layout for classroom separation and larger lab space and reconfiguring how the lab and the ventilation and all those things can go up there as well.
That's really exciting. That space is 1976, hasn't been touched except for a filtration system, uh, which will be moved to the outside of the building.
Correct. That's part of the scope of work. Installing new HVAC system that'll have a better filtration system in it. Uh, classrooms will be two on each end. So it'll be able to separate students more, have smaller classroom size and then have a larger lab space for them to do work. So those are projects that we're kind of in planning stages, some that have already broken ground and construction and things that we're doing for the school system. So there, as you can see, there's a lot going on and we're excited about that. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Hager.
Yes, sir.
With what you're doing at Woodland?
Yes, sir.
Parking going to decrease, increase, nothing?
Actually, I'm, I appreciate you bringing that up because right now, uh, the way they do parent drop off and pickup, um, and the way the school buses come in, there's usually a lot of traffic backing up Indian Ridge Road. So we're actually increasing parking spaces and we're constructing a new road that comes in and goes all the way around the school. And it's a two lane road and it's for parent pickup and drop off. So parents will be able to come in that way, stack all the way around where they're actually dropping off and picking up now. And then once they're completed with that, they'll go back out and pass on the people who are still waiting in line. So we won't have that stack of traffic on Indian Ridge Road any longer.
Good job.
Yep.
Same thing at Lake Ridge, right?
And Lake Ridge, we're flipping, uh, the bus pickup and the parent drop off to add more stacking on the property too. So we, we took all that into consideration when we were developing the site plan. Uh, putting in playground, moving things, moving the outside basketball court so that we could add parking and add stacking capability.
Not removing the court, just moving it.
Just moving it, yeah. Removing it and reinstalling it in a new location.
Question two. Uh, have you spent any money, good money for new Town Acres?
We are continually working on that. So, you know, we, we talked about this at our facilities committee meeting a little bit, the, the, the Esser money or Essery money, or however you want to say it, coming in is really going to help do some of these HVAC upgrades at these schools that we're already working on along with Mountain View. Uh, what that does, that frees up some PEP funding. And so instead of saying we could do it tomorrow, and I can't, I have no idea and can't say that. But what that should do is once these projects are complete and utilizing that money, it should move Town Acres to a lot closer to being completed than what we were originally told. I guess that's the best way to describe it.
Just thought of something, believe it or not, while you were talking. Uh, where's the city on the, uh, replacing the turf, which is thinking?
Well, I think that's going to be in the budget. Is it right?
I think it was approved.
I believe it was, the last I was told. And, and I think a big reason that that got approved and how that came about was, you know, how we're paying for some of these projects and that kind of helped assist in getting that turf uh, replaced. So I believe it is coming up. If I'm not mistaken, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but if I'm not mistaken, it's in, coming up in this budget, right?
It's in the city budget, yeah.
Yeah, in the city budget, under PEP projects.
What about my wall over?
Well, uh, the Public Arts Committee has applied for a grant to do a mural on that wall. And so they want to have the brick removed to do the mural directly onto the block. And so if they are successful in getting that grant, we'll go in and take the rest of the brick off and let them do the mural on the street facing side. If they're not successful in getting that grant, then I'm going to advertise it to bid to come back in and take the rest of the brick off and put new brick up and a cap on it.
Is that at the parking wreck pool?
Yeah, at Legion Street Pool.
Well, before anybody gets any ideas, it's not my wall. I'm looking after that wall because of wanting to.
That's exactly right. And you, you kind of tell me that all the time. So I appreciate that. But we are working forward. If we could get a mural there, that's an awesome place to put, uh, one of the downtown, if the Public Arts Committee can get a mural there.
Herb, Herb Grim is best buddy.
Yeah, we're doing a lot at Carver. If you guys get a chance to go by Carver and see what all we're doing at Carver, the city's doing, that's a great thing too. I know it's a school board meeting, but uh, I like to talk about how busy they're keeping.
Mainly serve children. A lot of, a lot of our students go there.
Absolutely. New splash pad getting ready to open Memorial Weekend there. Any other questions? You guys know I like to talk about what I do, so.
You're much appreciated.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Doesn't happen at the city, does it Randy?
The next report is our financial report ending March 2021, Leah Valley. And after that, she also has the update on sales tax, the PEP update.
Hopefully you can hear me a little bit better. I try to speak up. Revenue received for the month totaled $10,118,000. Of that property tax was $3,610,000. And through March, property tax was down 1.18% from the previous year. Sales tax collections was $1,749,000. And through March, sales tax was up 6.33% from last year. Expenditures for the month totaled $6,630,000. And as of March 31st, our fund balance was $14,441,000. March and April will see the high point on our fund balance. In May, we do not receive a BEP payment. So then we'll start seeing that fund balance to decline. And as of today, our cash balance is $15,469,000. And the insurance fund in March, an additional $335,000 was transferred to the insurance fund above our regular premiums. However, in April, the quarterly prescription rebate was received and so no additional funds were needed to be transferred for April. Are there any questions on the financial report?
I'll make a motion to approve this present.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed?
The PEP sales tax report balance as of March 31st was $5,670,000. Deposits consisted of the city of 208,000 and schools 170,000. And sales tax collections through March was 5.3% above the previous year.
Any questions? Okay. We do have one more report from Leah. We have the 2019, 2020 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. That's city annual audit.
I just wanted to highlight or point out a few things in the audit. Um, first, in the general purpose school fund, uh, we ended with a fund balance at the end of the year of $8,307,286. Fund balance did increase for the year, uh, for a net of $457,544. That increase is primarily due to increased revenues and sales tax. And then we did have, um, some savings recognized and a lot of our expenditures from the closure in the last quarter of the year. When you're looking at the report, you may notice that revenues and expenditures look quite a bit less than budget. School transportation is not included. They back that out because it's recorded in the city's expenditures. So it'd be double duplicated. And there was one finding for the city and school system. Uh, we're unable to provide a timely OPEB actuary report for open plans using the audit report. OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits. That's our retiree health insurance. To get the audit completed by December, we have to have the actuary run a report on all of our active employees and project out what that liability is and what's going to be reported.
I'll just congratulate you again on basically a clean audit. Um, whenever you're dealing with governmental funding, particularly when we have a budget of almost $80 million, that's, that's, um, means that you've done a great job, you and your staff.
Oh, it, it takes everybody out. The supervisors, our staff, everybody helps. So, but thank you.
Thank you.
This was an especially challenging year, so thank you. Any questions for Leah?
Is that an action audit?
Let's make it one, just in case. Is there a motion to accept the, uh, the city audit? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Just in case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to, uh, there is no unfinished business on our agenda. That brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any items that people wish to pull? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? That brings us to recommendations for the superintendent for action. You've got a lot for today.
I do. I have a lot of recommendations. Uh, first one is recommendation from the school zone assignment advisory committee. Has to do with our, um, prepare, preparation for fifth graders to return, which means they would actually stay at the elementary school. Uh, so we need to make sure that we have some space available. We need to make sure that we have some space available for, uh, students at Cherokee with the additional classrooms being built at Woodland. We also have, uh, an odd situation where the community right across from Indian Trail, it would make sense for them to be zoned over there. So Mr. Barnett's going to come forward, present, uh, an abbreviated version of what he presented to the school zone advisory committee.
And just a, uh, just a note here, we are going to hear this report tonight. We will not vote on this tonight. Um, we want to give anyone that's affected a chance to, to speak with us. So those families that will, are affected will be contacted over the next month. Um, and we'll make sure that they have a chance to contact us if they want to.
That's a great point. They're going to be contacted by their current school principals. There'll be a, uh, and this is not for next fall. Recommendation would be for 22, 22, 23. And then they will have an opportunity to go visit the school that they would be rezoned to, meet with both principals, take a tour and have questions answered. That would be Town Acres to Lake Ridge, Cherokee to Woodland. Uh, we just think that's, that's a great way to do it. The, the principals, uh, I've been in that situation myself and it just makes it go a lot better when you communicate really well. And the best way to do that is at the school level, uh, between those, those principals with those families.
Do you have something, Mr. Hager?
I don't want to report.
Can you, can you make sure you're talking into your microphone so people can hear?
I don't want to jump the report. Uh, I want to emphasize, I would like to see it emphasize parents will have the opportunity to be grandfathered where they currently are with this proposal.
Yes, sir. That's the, probably the first bullet item on his, uh, on his report.
I thought it would, but I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
So as Ms. Hall said, I'll be giving an abbreviated version of the report, uh, we discussed a couple of weeks ago with the rezoning committee. And I, I want to go backwards a little bit to the April meeting and talk about some current school numbers, uh, projected school numbers before the rezoning. And then there's a couple, three areas we want to talk about under consideration. And I've included in this, just like I did in the report on 19th, the map view. So you can have a little picture of that. And then, uh, we've put together some projected numbers after the rezoning. Uh, so I'll go through that with you. As you can see, and some of this comes from the April meeting that we discussed. If you look at column on the left, that's current numbers as of March. Uh, K through four at all of our elementary schools. And the projected numbers in the right column are projected 22, 23 with, uh, moving the fifth grade back to each of those elementary schools. And you can take a look at those numbers. That's the numbers we reviewed earlier. So and there's just a large map of our school zones. Uh, areas we're going to be talking about include Town Acres, moving over an area like Dr. Barnett said, moving over to Lake Ridge, uh, an area at Cherokee, uh, moving to Woodland. And then there's a really small area we, I just, I'll put it up here and I'll explain it as we go through it. So this is the first area we're talking about, the Cherokee to Woodland group. And that's, uh, primarily West Walnut, down to Huffine. Uh, and that area, uh, in that part of town, kind of over behind ETSU, uh, at West Walnut. And there are, we've identified somewhere between 100 and 125 kids K3 that are in this particular zone. And we're asking, we're considering to move this group to, uh, Woodland Elementary. And there's the breakdown. Obviously, you know, that number changes periodically, about 125 students K through three. So that's from that piece. Now, this is an area uh, that we've talked about a couple of times, moving from Town Acres to Woodland. And Dr. Barnett may want to talk a little bit more briefly about it. But it's, uh, if you're familiar with, uh, Nob Creek, Simmons Ridge, there's one student, there's a fourth grader and a first grader, I think. Uh,
That's right. And they're over on the opposite side of the street. So when you look at the map, you're going to see Berkshire. Uh, and it looks like they're connected, but that's really way up on the ridge. So the way you access those two neighborhoods, when our John, when we met with, uh, Miss Jan Yutola from John City Transit, it's really contain, it, it really is connected to the Woodland Zone. You have to go through the tunnel, up the hill and either to the left up Simmons Ridge. We don't have, we currently do not have any students in Simmons Ridge. Um, and on the other side, uh, Stone Crest. So I think this name.
Stone Ridge.
Stone Ri, uh, I think it's Stone Crest. Might be Stone Ridge, but it's the opposite side. We have a first grader and a fourth grader.
Yeah.
So it's not going to change the fourth grader's school zone from middle school. It will still be, uh, Liberty Bell. The, the, uh, but the first grader would have that option, option as these other families would to be able to grandfather into their current school. We just want to make sure of that. But that was a request from transit that made sense because if you've been on that road, coming and going, the top of that hill is really, uh, a tricky area in that way. I think the buses can come back down and, uh, back into the Woodland Zone. It's just a better, uh, fit for John City Transit really. And it doesn't make a huge impact on either school.
As we're talking about grandfathering children though, it's important to say we don't provide transportation to the old school, only to the new school.
Okay. And then the last area we've been discussing is over across the road from Indian Trail, um, Kensington Station, Shadowwood. And then if you'll notice right in here, there's a group of townhouses apartment type, uh, housing in that area. And in that group, K through three, we've identified about 42 students. So, uh, and you can see the grade breakdown in that area. It's more of a natural fit to be zoned to Lake Ridge and go to Indian Trail, uh, just primarily for, uh, ease of movement across the road to Indian Trail from where they are. And then this is our estimated change in projected student numbers. Uh, again, this changes and it'll change as we get closer to 22, 23, it'll change a few times. But if you notice projected for Cherokee, when we, uh, the 125 students, if, if that proposal moves, that would reduce their enrollment to 331. Fairmont would stay the same. Lake Ridge would jump up about 42 students. Mountain View North Side, South Side would all stay the same. Town Acres would lose 43. That's the 42, uh, going to Lake Ridge and then the one up on top of the hill. And then Woodland would pick up about 126 students. So.
Of course, that is if everybody chose to, uh, you know, ride the bus or to go ahead and switch. And a lot of times, well, no, most of us don't have a lot of experience with this. But from my experience, when you do the tour, sometimes there's that opportunity, families think they're resistant, and then they go to the tour and they're like, these are really, these are really nice teachers over here too, and they do a great job. And it's really nice school building. Let's just go ahead and make the switch. So we're giving families, the recommendation from the committee is to give families the option. But I think a lot of times when they're able to go do that and kind of ease into it, then it'll make that recommendation, uh, a little bit easier for them, the, when, when that comes in June.
Dr. Barnett, will we also be contacting, um, parents of students that are registering for kindergarten this year?
They, they are included in this group because they are, that's their home school, would remain the same next year. And then they would have the option, here, here's the other piece, you actually have an option in this recommendation that if you know you're going to be rezoned, and you have a kindergarten, first grader, whatever, and you want to go ahead and make that switch, then we're going to accommodate that. The numbers at, uh, Woodland, they can definitely handle some students that will switch. I don't think everybody's going to move immediately. And, uh, Lake Ridge can currently handle that number. It's not a huge number. It doesn't really give us relief that we need at Town Acres. What we needed there is a new building. Uh, but it does give the Town Acres, uh, community just a little bit of relief. And I think that was a big, that was a question that I've had over the last couple of years from families that live in those neighborhoods. It makes sense, we're across the street, and we talked to Eldana, Jen Yutola from Transit. She said, you know, those, those neighborhoods are actually closer to Lake Ridge than Town Acres. It makes sense. They were rezoned back in, oh, I think in '05, due to overcrowding at Lake Ridge. It was just, uh, there were so many people at the time in the school that they rezoned to Town Acres, and Town Acres really became overcrowded pretty quickly too. So we're, we're, we're going to need some capacity. Um, one of the things I always remind people, um, Indian Trail is a bottleneck. We do not have room. It's built out as far as we can build it. Uh, and then when we do this, Mountain View's, or, excuse me, uh, Woodland's going to be built out as far as you can, Lake Ridge is going to be built out. So we continue to add homes, continue to add families to our community, which is great, but we have to make sure we keep in sight that, that also comes with cost of building additional space for families and schools.
I have three questions. The first one, I think Ms. Hall answered, but since Dr. Barnett brought up, if those families, the kindergarten, first grade, want to go ahead to the new school, transportation is not provided until the following year, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Second question, all of those townhomes that are being built behind the mall, where did those get zoned to?
Currently, they're zoned for Woodland.
Okay. Because I thought if they get zoned to Town Acres, then we're already busting at the scenes at Town Acres. So those currently will be zoned to Woodland.
And we've talked about that in committee.
And I do love the question. We talked about it in committee as far as, for anybody that's listening or anybody in the audience here, I've, I've always looked at those apartments that go up and like, oh my goodness, how are we going to handle that? And it's generally not, does not add a lot of students to the school system.
Okay. I mean, that, when, every time I go by it, I think, oh my goodness, there's so many going up. And then my last question, and I, I don't think it's really our duty, but I, I hope once this map is finalized, and I'm not a real estate person, but I guess this will be on our website, so people that are buying a home can then look at that. That, it'll say, starting 2022, this is perfect.
Absolutely. With, uh, I would imagine with it, with the recommendations as well, as grandfathered in, all the things that we'd talk about with this recommendation.
But I always encourage you, if you're buying a home, call the school, check the map. If you go in on the map, put in the address, it'll tell you which school. But I had some experiences with people who didn't call us, and they were not in, not even in the city. So I think it's really important for families to remember to call, just check, we want to help you. Make sure you're in the, uh, in the zone and inside the city, especially if that's where you want to be.
One of the other things we discussed at the committee, there's some, some areas that are contiguous to this that are not developed yet, but there's some signs up that look like they will be developed. We're going to go ahead and zone those areas. I mean, I guess it doesn't get zoned until there's a house going on, but we're looking at those areas too, to make sure that they follow this whole group.
And there's considerable construction going on around town. If you've been out riding around, there's considerable construction going on.
Any other questions for Mr. Barnett?
Good job.
Thank you.
So, uh, next is, uh, temporary change to policy.
So I had a, a question about this, so I want to make sure before, uh, we go through this. Based on the guidance from Tennessee State Board, we recommend John C. Schools, uh, John C. Board of Education approve the emergency rule governing the inclusion of assessments in students' grades, uh, during the 2021 school year. Uh, in the fall, we went ahead and the board already approved the high school, that this, this would be the case. So this, we have to add, uh, three through eighth grade, just to make sure that the recommendation is, the recommendation is, as permitted by State Board of Education, emergency rule, students in grades three through eight, but it also, you've already approved grades nine through 12. Uh, recommendation is that T and Ready scores include, included, if doing so improves the grade, uh, then we include it. If not, then, uh, then it does not include it in the student's grade. No student shall have his or her grade lowered because of T and Ready scores during this school year. So similar to the recommendation we did in the fall for high school.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve this, uh, temporary change?
I will motion to approve the change.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Insurance.
Here it is. We have a recommendation regarding insurance you received. Uh, I, I spoke to each of you individually about that. We had a deadline, uh, to go to the state, uh, to be able to switch over to state insurance, Tennessee State Insurance. The best person, if you have any questions to, that need to be answered, would be Leah Valley or Tammy Pierce. But, uh, you know, we've been self-funded for many, many years, and it's just come to a, a point where we did a, we conducted a vote of our employees who are eligible to receive insurance, and the vote was, uh, very, uh, favorable of switching over to the state plan. So we're asking the board to ratify that.
I know that was a, a quick vote for our teachers, and I appreciate all of, all of the teachers that, that took the time to do that. And I appreciate our JCA partners to make sure that the word got out about what that was and, and all the work that went on from our administration too.
Thank you. It was just such a difficult, uh, decision, but it really goes into our budget and how we budget, and it's just become a situation where we just can't afford to be self-insured when you get, get with a larger group, uh, for our health insurance.
When, when, when does it actually start?
July 1st.
This year?
Yes, sir.
All right, is there a motion to accept this recommendation?
I move that we accept the recommendation to transition to the state healthcare plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think Kirk got that. Uh, any other discussion?
Since I am through that plan, should I vote? Should I not vote? Because I am a, obviously, pregnant.
And I'm on the health insurance plan too. I think it's okay to vote.
You just need to do what you just did. Now, since you.
I'm on the plan as well.
All right. All those in favor say, well, maybe, perhaps we should do this by roll call.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Simpson?
Yes.
Ms. Tree?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
All right. I'll actually take this next one. Uh, each year, we, um, do a evaluation of the superintendent, and it's something that we do through TSBA. They send us a form that we fill out, uh, in score, and then send it back to them. They do a compilation, and we all get those results. If, if there's any discussion, it often happens at our retreats, but what we do encourage, and we don't usually discuss it in, in a meeting, but I do encourage each of you to contact Steve and sit down and go over your scores with him, if, if that's something you want to do. Uh, this is going to be coming up. Miranda, remind me when we said we'd do this?
I think the end of May.
End of May with a deadline in the beginning of June.
I'll send that one reminder.
So you'll be getting something from TSBA. Make sure you take the time to, to fill that out rather quickly, and then we'll get those results back. Um, the superintendent's compensation committee will also meet, especially, probably once we get those results in.
Thank you. Next, uh, on the agenda is to set today, the date for the annual school board retreat. So a lot of times we do it in the fall, and I thought it might be timely to try to do that during the last two weeks of June, uh, maybe the last week of June. I don't know your schedules, who's going to be in town, out of town, and we may have to move it to July or to the beginning of the school year. But we thought we would try to go ahead and.
So could, could Miranda give us some dates?
I think so. Just need a, a date.
Let's just ask right now, is there anyone that's going to be gone either the last two weeks of June, and we know not to do that?
I'm going to be gone the second to the last week.
Okay. Last, last two weeks you're gone? Okay. So we'll take June off, we'll start looking at July.
And if you could avoid the dead weeks, that would be great. It's the only time I, I have off.
That's probably why we end up doing it in the fall.
Yeah, probably. So we'll send that out and, and try to get that. We typically, in the last several years, we have not met in July. We will look as we get closer to whether we need to do that or not, and often if we meet, it's a shorter meeting. And then in your packet is a proposed Board of Education calendar of events and annual agenda. Review that. If you have any questions, contact Miranda or Dr. Barnett or me. There is no new business on our agenda. That brings us to information items and committee reports. Our wonderful staff who has hung in here is welcome to leave. You're also welcome to stay if you want to hear these. But thank you for all your work and all you've done. And I should have said this earlier, Happy Teacher Appreciation Week.